Madam Clerk, we're still waiting for two more council members.
Mayor, you might want to turn off your camera. Your connection is buffering. Councilmember Early is here, but I have yet to-
Oh, it is? Okay, I'll do that.
Karina Orosco's here as well. Oh, thank you. I was looking for your name. Everybody's here, Madam Mayor.
Okay, so is it, how does the connection look?
The connection is bad. It might work better if you turn your camera off.
Okay, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna start the meeting and then I'm gonna hang up and dial back in with the Wi-Fi. I think that's what I could, or let me just call back. Call back again with the Wi-Fi. All right, Madam Clerk, how does this sound? Much better?
Much, much better.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we will now begin the City of West Sacramento Special Closed Session Meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency and West Sacramento Financing Authority, July 13. We will be having a closed session agenda meeting tonight, and the item on the agenda is listed under Item 1, City Attorney. Madam Clerk, please provide a statement.
The city council meeting will be conducted via teleconference pursuant to government code section 54953E. The city council adopted resolution 2287 on June 15, 2022, confirming that a statewide state of emergency continues to exist because of the COVID-19 virus pandemic, and the Yolo County Public Health Officer continues to recommend measures to promote social distancing. Members of the public are asked to watch via the city Zoom link provided on the city website. Public comment can be made using Zoom or through email by emailing comments to the clerk@cityofwestsacramento.org. Public comment sent via email before 5:30 PM has been provided to the city council and posted on the city website, of which there were none. Public comment given on Zoom is limited to three minutes and can only be made on matters within the city of West Sacramento's jurisdiction. The city council cannot take action or deliberate on items that are not on the agenda unless there is an emergency and the need to take action arose after the agenda was posted. When it is time, and if you'd like to provide a comment, please press the raise hand button or press star nine on your telephone. Speakers will be called on in the order that their hands are raised. Please leave your hands raised until you have finished making your comment. When your name is called, the clerk will unmute you and will notify you when your time is up. Starting on July 20, 2022, city council meetings will be held in person at City Hall. Public comment on July 20 and moving forward may be provided in person or by email. Instructions on providing public comment via email are on the city website. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we will begin with allowing for public comment before we go into a closed session where I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session, and then when we return, I'll ask for a motion to return back from closed session and have the city attorney report out on any action items that occurred in closed session. Madam Clerk, for now, do we have any items under closed session where I will allow each speaker to speak for three minutes?
If you'd like to provide comment at this time, please raise your hand. Our first speaker is Alfred Melbourne. Mr. Melbourne?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Thank you for the opportunity to express myself at this time, and I would just like to say that I'm very disappointed in the fact that the three city council members, Karina Orozco, Krista Desma, and Early West, were advised to go this far by our city council. We have had no apology or announcement taking responsibility for attempting to break up our historic community of interest to protect special interests, industry, to preserve their seats, turning their back on Broderick and Bright. These three city council members were following the advice of our city council that have led us down a path of waste and division. I do believe that the city council needs to be replaced and faith restored into a local system of democracy. Having participated and watching this whole court proceeding go down the line, it's been very disheartening to see what divisions have taken place within our city and how certain city council members, namely Karina Orozco, has continued to try to make this presence in our community at Bright Park throughout with other upcoming events she has posted to to try to show that she's so involved without really acknowledging us as an organization and the rest of the community out here as a whole by apologizing to us and letting us know that what she was doing was wrong. It's a total shame, and I'm very disappointed in her and the way she portrayed herself to myself and to the community as a whole. These other city council members, we're gonna continue to run into them and see them, and it's hard not to be able to have a conversation and get the representation that we need because they feel guilty and they can't approach us. I will say that Krista Desma has approached me and we were able to have a conversation during all this process and that there's work to be done. You know, the judge decided based upon all the case law that you guys were wrong, and I think that you guys need to take responsibility for this. So as far as the city council, the council goes, the lawyers, I don't think that they should be in place that we should look to getting new counsel to represent our city because they caused us a huge waste of time, of money, of respect, and that the divisions that have been caused in our community are gonna be far-reaching, and we can do better. So I just want to state that for the record, and again, thank you, Madam Mayor, city council, for the work that you guys do.
Our next speaker is Rhonda Pope Flores. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Pope Flores?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let my time start now. Okay, I just, I actually want to echo many of the points that Alfred made. Very disappointed in how this has turned out. I'm very concerned about the amount of money that has been expended and wasted on a process like this. I'm just disappointed. I'm disappointed in the city's legal counsel that I went back and watched those meetings just to absorb all of this, and you guys, you really need to look at your city council, legal counsel, and reevaluate that because you were led down a path that, I will say, Norma Akala made many of the points that ended up in the judge's determination that this map was noncompliant. You heard multiple members of the community plead not to break up Broderick and Bright, and Alfred is right, there is an apology that is needed, and it does make me sick to see these three individuals now just walking around acting as if they did nothing wrong. You did something terrible, and Broderick and Bright will never forget that. I just, I do want to thank Maria Grahalva for bringing this lawsuit because I don't know where we would be with it, and I want to applaud the mayor for not taking a position on it and waiting to hear from the community. Thank you for that. I want to thank Norma for bringing up the points, and the three council members, I ask you to go back and examine yourself because I think that your visions for a riverfront over a community was wrong, and it was hurtful, and there's a lot to be done now. There's a lot of work that you need to do. So I just thank you for this opportunity, and I'm sad. It's very sad. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maria Grahalva.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I want to report out to the public, mostly to Broderick and Bright. I thank Alfred Melbourne and Rhonda Flores-Pope for being at today's hearing. We had a hearing today, and it's important that the community know that we ended up adopting the map that had that weird notch. Unfortunately, that notch was actually a gerrymandering that we acknowledged, and it was actually a compromise at the time that it was drawn, and we actually submitted another map, but it was not acknowledged because we didn't file it with the court properly. But we did have another map that did not have that notch, and what that notch meant, the public needs to know, is it put a council member Orozco in District 2. I live in District 2. And so she does not live in District 2, but unfortunately, right now, Mescorosco is supposed to be representing effective these maps, District 2. And so I wanted the public to know that. It's a sad thing. The next question that's coming up, the public needs to know, is sequencing, whether we're gonna have district elections this November or not. And I want the public and everyone to know that we want, the plaintiffs want district elections in November. We want the, to have four-term seats. We don't want any other seats. So if anybody tells you different, please don't listen to that. And we want four-year term seats, and then in 2024, District 1 and District 2 will be up for a seat. And that's when Mescorosco has to face the community, if she's still around, of Michigan and Glide and Sutter. And she'll have to explain at that time, if she's still around, why she voted against them. And so we'll leave it there. I just needed to report out to the community. Don't let the city attorney tell you different, and council members, don't let the city attorney tell you a different either. We want district elections now for four years. Thank you very much, and we have done spending money on this, I hope. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Andy Domit.
Hi, I'll be relatively quick. My name is Andy. I'm a resident of the Stonegate area. I'm grateful that some friends watched this morning's hearing because otherwise I wouldn't have known that there was a motion being discussed to have half the city voting for different length terms, length terms, I'm sorry. That's completely undemocratic, and it seems like a scam to me. So I would hope that it would be treated as such. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Maria Garcia.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria Garcia, y le hago eco a Alfred, a Rhonda, y a la señora Maria Grahalva. Y ya es tiempo de tener una persona quien me pueda traducir. ¿Queremos un mapa que nos dé la igualdad para todos? ¿Queremos que las personas que nos representan en cada distrito nos escuchen y nos representen de la mejor manera? ¿Queremos la mejor representación para toda nuestra comunidad y toda nuestra gente? En el área de West Sacramento, de Broderick and Bright. ¿Queremos nuestras banquetas? ¿Queremos nuestras alberca? ¿Queremos que nuestros hijos gocen de los mismos beneficios que todos deben de gozar? ¿Queremos la igualdad para todos? Ya es tiempo de eso. Gracias por la oportunidad de hablar.
Our next speaker is Verna Solpezio.
Okay, apologize. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Verna Solpezio. I'm calling to share information with the general public that they may not be aware of, but should be regarding districting, what's happening behind closed doors. Did I just hear correctly that a map has been proposed and approved that has been gerrymandered? My mind wrapping around what is happening behind closed doors is, I can't comprehend. Earlier today, I listened to the Yolo County Superior Court hearing regarding the districting case. In that 13 minutes, I received more updates and communication about where we were at with this process than I've heard anywhere else. It sounds like we have a map, but I'm shocked that no one in the community has access to view it. The lack of communication has led to rumors, misinformation, and just plain confusion as to what districts look like. In the hearing, I also learned that districts 3 and 4 will be up for election this year, but what blew my mind again is that in closed session tonight, it will be decided if districts 3 and 4 will be for two years or four-year terms. In what world does a city council election in terms change without any input from the public? City governance structures and elections are sacred and need to be treated as such. These are conversations that need to be noticed and read as residents, given the opportunity to weigh in. I'm in support of continuing our four-year terms for city council members in a general election. I'm in support of continuing our four-year terms for city council members in a general election. Considering two-year terms is unfair to two districts who vote for their council member. It's telling half of the community your vote doesn't matter as much. Additionally, a two-year term puts two city council districts at a disadvantage by only allowing their elected officials to serve for two years versus the standard four. This whole process has been based on the Fair Maps Act. Be fair in this process and give the voters the same opportunity in all districts to representation for the same amount of time. And finally, to put a city in a position where there could be a complete turnover of city council and mayor in one election is just bad governance. Staggered terms are necessary for institutional knowledge to remain and keep city business moving along when newly elected officials get a little time to grab their sea legs. Any consideration to set up our city for a complete turnover of leadership in one election is irresponsible and bad leadership. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nels Eklund. Mr. Eklund is using an older version of Zoom. So I'm going to need to promote to panelists and then move back to attendees. Just one moment, please. You may provide your comment now.
Thank you.
And this is Irene Eklund, by the way.
Yes, for the record, it's Irene Eklund, not my husband, Nels. Anyway, I watched the hearing today too. And the only person that I heard mention two years in the courtroom was the city's attorney, which blew me away. There are two seats up, they should be up for, for a four-year term. And I support that this election needs to happen in November. This CVRA has been going on since 2018 and people have been dragging their feet. It's time to stop. You are bleeding the city residents dry. Please, we need district elections this November. And districts three and four should be for four-year terms. I don't know where the city attorney got two years. It's, it's not even reasonable. Thank you very much.
We have no additional hands raised. Mayor, you're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Close the public comment and request a motion to adjourn to closed session. Councilmember Early moved, Councilmember Ledesma second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early. Councilmember Akala.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Orozco.
Yes.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, all right. We are going to now go to another link and this link, I think, will remain open until we return, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we are bringing the special meeting back to order. May I have a motion to reconvene back to the special meeting? The public to participate. Thank you.
I can do it.
All right. Madam Clerk, councilmember Alcala moved and councilmember Early seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Hi, thank you, madam clerk. You're now back in our public part of the meeting and just wanted to see if we still have. We still have quite a few members of the public here today with us and I'm really grateful for their participation and their interest in what is going to be happening in coming election. Is there an echo, by the way?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Roscoe or Mayor Protem Roscoe. Okay, so the echo's gone. So, so I just want to say thank you for your interest and thank you for your public comments. We've taken them to heart. We've have, it has persuaded us in the decision-making process, not only tonight, but throughout the course of time. And we are really grateful for the public participation. On May 18th, as a result of that, on May 18th, the city council voted to transition to district-based elections. And last Thursday on July 7th, the city council met to consider whether to appeal the Yolo Superior Court's ruling on the district map that was presented to the court by the plaintiff. Now, the council agreed again unanimously to not appeal the court's ruling on the map and sought to confirm with the plaintiff that districts three and four would be sequenced first with November 2022 election with four-year terms for those council members, which was the sequence adopted again unanimously by the council on June 1st. And that's important because it demonstrates that the city council has been not only taking into consideration the public comment, but also the demographer, Mr. Mitchell, who gave us some insight on the rationale for that. There was questioning and clarification requested and it was very helpful for us to make that decision for the benefit of the constituents that were interested in running for an election. And, you know, we are really appreciative that we received a public comment from the plaintiff herself here tonight. It is something that we see eye to eye on and as I conveyed, this is where our position has been as a council, as a unified front on these decisions as well. And, you know, these, these, you know, being, going through a litigation, you know, and being a council member has made it really difficult for council members to, you know, you know, know what to say in public while things are being litigated. What can we say publicly without jeopardizing a situation? As we are negotiating, everything is a delicate balance and I think I'm hearing from members of the public that they would like to know more and receive transparency. And for that, there will be, you know, a posting done for the public to be able to track where we are to date on what is happening and what decisions are yet left to be made between the two parties and submitted to the court for final approval. And we are working earnestly to try to get these decisions done. It's something that we really take seriously as an entire council. We want to make sure that the upcoming election provides the strongest representation for all voters and candidates who are seeking for an elected office so that they can have the opportunity to represent our community. And that's really why I think all of us are grateful for participation from the public, whether we receive it out, you know, out in the community, participated in a public event, or hanging out with their families or in a grocery store. These are things that we know that the community is paying attention to and asking for some insight from us and as we also listen to you and what your perspective is. So today, the court provided clarification regarding the map, which is one of the reasons why we had a difficult time being able to post anything. And that today, that clarification really is helping us to move forward. And sitting, the plaintiff met and conferred about the sequencing and the term. So again, earlier tonight, the plaintiff stated that she supported the sequencing of districts three and four for four-year terms, which again was adopted by the council unanimously on June 1st. There was a reference to something about the court order that was looking to explore that further, but I don't think council could have been any more clear as we have been in expressing our position on this. And I think that we've all been unified in expressing that position. So at this point, the city council will be, the city will be moving ahead with the plaintiff's map and seeking a final ruling from Yolo Superior Court to establish the sequencing of district three and four for the November election and for your terms for those seats. And this information and including the plaintiff's map, so you get a chance to see what that looks like, our demographer will be posting, be contributing to post that. And the reason why that's important because it provides the specifics on the streets and where, you know, people live. And if you're interested in, you know, voting for somebody or running or, you know, providing guidance to your constituencies on educating others and that information is pretty key and important to providing that information to the public. So that'll be posted on the city's website by the end of this week. Well, and it's tomorrow, so, so tomorrow. And I just want to thank my fellow councilmembers. We've worked through some hard and grueling few months and this is always a test of our leadership and it builds stronger character amongst each other so that, you know, so that we can work more collaboratively on more challenging things. And as if COVID-19 was not challenging enough for us, we did this via Zoom and I just want to applaud not only, you know, all of you, but also city staff and all of the, you know, members of the public who went out of their way to contribute. It, this is, this is a very passionate issue for members of our community and grateful for them to bring this to us. It was a few years in play and we are hopefully nearing the end, I think, this, the end of this week. My prayers have always been up to get this down to the finish line and, and it's been done. And I just want to applaud and thank my fellow councilmembers on the hard work and everybody else, including members of the community that, you know, here present, who have been passionately involved, putting their time, you know, energy, the associations on the Facebook pages, you know, just sharing their thoughts and their concerns and organizing. I think a lot of leaders grew out of this process and we look forward to working with you as we move forward in implementing the district-based elections. And with that, I would accept a motion, I think, to adjourn if I did. Oh, sorry. And I just want to mention one more thing. The city attorney, did I miss anything?
No, I believe you covered everything, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All said and I need to adjourn.
All right, madam clerk, councilmember, Mayor Protem Roscoe moved and councilmember Early seconded.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Roscoe.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.